Very good evening to you. Welcome to this special broadcast. Today is a beautiful day and it is a special day, being the 4th of October. First of all, there are October babies out there. Happy birthday to you. But October is not all about birthdays. Today, we have Wild Animal Day, alright? So if you have a pet, good to that particular pet, treat it even better. Yeah, it's Wild Animals Day. But apart from that, there are pending issues in our society. Each and every single day, we strive and strive to improve each other, our livelihoods. And that's why also on this particular date, we mark the World Habitat Day. And today, actually, I have a very informed experience. I think the combined experience of this particular panel, where we'll be discussing rights to housing and prevention of evictions will be very critical. Just looking at the notable figures that we have on this particular panel, I believe that in the next one hour, we'll be able to have a proper engagement and to understand the issue of housing in our country. I mean, what is happening? We're already in the 25th century. 2020, amidst a pandemic, thousands of people are evicted from a place. And there is no much consideration what is happening to them. So some of those native greatest will look from the policy perspective. What does the law say? What are we implementing? And what can we do better at the end of the day? My name is Noke Kimpwe. I will be the moderator of this particular panel. And without wasting my time, I would like our panelists to introduce themselves. Yeah, this is not the situation of, you know, somebody saying, "Oh, I'm not even worthy to untie your shoes," as the good book says. But these are very informed and key people. So I'll start from the far end. Madam, you look very awesome in the African print. Please introduce yourself and your expectations for the next one hour. What are you hoping to achieve?
Thank you very much, No. My name is Faith Alube. I'm the CEO of the Kenya Land Alliance and a human rights lawyer. Kenya Land Alliance is an ungovernmental organization that brings together non-state actors that work on land justice. And I expect to learn.
Definitely, at least we have one thing in common, I see.
Thank you.
Definitely, I wish I would have put on my African print today. It was a bad day to miss that. Anyway, the gentleman next, please introduce yourself and whom do you represent?
Okay, thank you so much, moderator. I'm Dr. Nicola Sorago from Hakijomi. I'm the executive director of Hakijomi, equally at home in this university. This is my mother university and I teach here at the School of Law.
Wow, beautiful. It's every child's dream to be a lawyer. It's very important. Well, the gentleman next, at least we have one thing in common, the Thai. Other than that, please introduce yourself, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Oscar Angote. I'm a judge in the Environment and Land Court, currently based at the Milimani Commercial Court. My expectations for this evening is we want to discuss issues to do with adequate housing, accessible housing, and to learn one or two things about the law pertaining to evictions. Thank you.
Definitely, thank you very much, sir. Madam, please introduce yourself.
Thank you very much. My name is Gathur Goku. I'm the first chair of the National Land Commission. And what I'm expecting from this engagement is to look at different problems. Some of them are caused by political issues, economic issues. Others are caused by environmental problems. Others are caused by cultural problems. By looking at the context of how evictions are carried out, we will, I hope, not just look at the law, but look at these conflicts of interest that we have had in our country since time immemorial. Look at the current ways of addressing them and then come out with a roadmap of possibilities of addressing these issues in a more effective way.
Definitely, wow. Keywords, a roadmap of possibilities. Beautiful, sir, please introduce yourself.
Thank you very much. I'm Ezekiel Rema, representing Mungano and Avijiji. This is a social movement. We were formed by the people from the informal settlements, who are the victims of marginalization of the evictions and landlessness in Kenya. I hope this conversation today is going to help people to understand why we have this problem in Kenya. And even the sharing of this conference, I hope most of the people will learn more about this happening.
Definitely, wow, thank you very much. Okay, so when you talk about housing, this is a human right. We have a right to shelter. I mean, we don't stay out there, even if you're a company. You have to carry your tent to stay somewhere inside, which is very critical. Maybe starting from the rights issue, let us clarify that so that we understand constitutionally our Kenyan constitution and also the laws governing the globe. Right to housing, what are the native greatest? What does it say? Is it as simple as I stated? Or do we need more? Maybe starting at the center, sir. Right to housing, explain to us where the constitution stands at this particular issue.
Yeah, thank you very much. The right to housing is a constitutional right. It's under Article 43, Subarticle 1, where it provides that every person has the right to adequate and accessible housing. Now, this right is one of the rights of the socio-economic rights under Article 43, which are supposed to be realized by the government so that the government needs to make sure that every person has that right. The constitution goes further to state in Article 21 that this right will be realized progressively. And it's supposed to be realized progressively by the government coming up with legislative and policies on how it's going to address this particular issue, on making sure that progressively everybody has an adequate house and he can access a house. So that is a constitutional framework of this particular right to housing. At an international level, these are rights, which is actually one of the rights in the international covenant on economic, social, and cultural rights. It is recognized at an international level. And at that particular level, we also have guidelines on how you should treat people who actually do not have shelter on their head so that you treat them with dignity. And there is a detailed procedure, which I'm sure we are going to discuss. So that is the framework of the right to housing and adequate housing.
Definitely, and from that understanding, it feels like going to campus where you learn theory, okay? And when you come to the industry, we are told as Kenyans, we are told quaground vitunita falti, alright? Things are a little bit different, what the constitution says and what exactly is happening on a general scale of things. Coming to you, Dr. Eri. I mean, have we fulfilled that constitutional right? Is it something that as a country we are pursuing with intentionality?
Okay, thank you so much. I think as we talk about the right to housing, we have to understand the obligation that the state has in the context of housing. If you look at the constitution in Article 21, it talks about state obligations and the obligation of the state to respect, protect, promote, fulfill, and observe the rights that are contained in the constitution, which includes the right to housing in Article 43, as my colleague has said. So if you look at how our government has tried to implement the right that is entrenched in the constitution, we find that there are gaps. If you look at what Justice Angote has said, the state has to put in place measures, including legislative and other measures. Even though we have the Land Act, which contains some provisions for the protection of the right to housing, in practice, you find that that act is lacking in terms of the extent of provisions of protection that it provides to members of the public, especially those who live in vulnerable settlements, like in the informal settlements and people who do not have land tenure security in terms of the title that they have to the land. So you find that in the context of the right to housing, which is related to the right to land and protection from eviction, we have the Land Act as amended, which provides for some frameworks for the protection of people who have informal tenure in the context if they have to be evicted. But evictions still happen without following that law and without the institutions that are given responsibility for the protection of the rights of persons to actually act. And it's good that we have the court here and it's good that we have the National Land Commission here because the National Land Commission has been given specific duties and responsibilities in relation to how evictions are supposed to be conducted and the level of notice that people have to be given before they are evicted. The courts have the power to protect people in the context of if we run to court, the court can give conservatory orders to protect people and to prevent their eviction until all the measures have been put in place to protect their rights. The challenge is in the practice in that sometimes the police do not obey this law and do not follow these guidelines. Just last week, and I'm coming to finish, we had evictions in Deep Sea, in Westlands. We were able to approach the police officers and the regional commissioner, who was guiding the process, and told them, "This case is still in court. Please stop, abide by the law. Let the issue be sorted out by the court before you remove those people." But they told us, "You know what? Live or else."
Whoa, that is quite sad because for a system to work, then there has to be synergy and different players of it. So you approaching the police here, saying, "Oh, these are court issue." Like, "No, no, no, no. As we have a separate kind of system that has told us to proceed with this." Maybe coming to Faith a little bit. I mean, this lack of synergy, what is causing that? What is causing the police when they're told, you know, "There is a court order on this particular issue. You shouldn't proceed." They can just confidently proceed with eviction. Why this disparity amongst different players?
That's quite unfortunate that duty bearers cannot work together towards land justice for the urban poor in the case of Deep Sea. But I'd also like just to say that some of the causes that increase the vulnerability of such groups include insecure tenure, lack of political goodwill, and at times, communities abdicate their oversight role to NGOs and other people of goodwill instead of them just arming themselves with good knowledge and demand for their rights as well. And you're talking about lack of synergy. The lack of political goodwill. The dissemination of information is not done well. And if it's done, then you get that facts are not disseminated as they should. And then Article 10 of our constitution is very clear on the values that should be followed when you're doing anything, even including development. Those values are never followed. And those values have also informed Article 60 of our constitution when you are dealing with land. So when you're talking about lack of synergy, the breach of court rulings by the government, the exposure of the poor and the lack of support by the government, it's something that is quite unfortunate that it should stop.
Wow, heavy. And this is just the first round. We haven't even dug deep into it. You know, Faith has mentioned something about the role that we have to play, even us Wananchi, yeah? The very own people that we are living in these spaces. There is an element of unity that comes into play and helps. I mean, in terms of securing our right to housing as communities, are we intentional about that? Are we sticking together to make sure and watching out for each other? In case of such a situation, we are able to stand our ground and say, "This is not right and things should be done differently."
Okay, thank you. To me, we understand that this situation is very different from my colleagues, but there are some of the issues I can agree. One, if the constitution provides for those provisions, for example, Article 43b, right to housing, adequate housing, accessible with security of tenure. That is the constitution, which is says. It is stopped there. It doesn't say how. These poor people can access those houses. Because you see, there is a problem of funds allocation in Kenya. For many years, there is nowhere the government has been serious on looking on the problem of housing. There is nowhere. The only institution which is mandated in housing development in Kenya for the civil servants is the National Housing, which is allocated very little money for housing development. So most of the houses are built by private sector, which are very expensive. And that's why we have those informal settlements where the poor people can afford. But still, you find these informal settlements are occupying public land. And the public land, according to our constitution now, is under the National Land Commission. For example, if you are removing people from a road reserve, for example, the Deep Sea case, the road reserve is a public land. Who is supposed to deal with the community? This is the National Land Commission, which is supposed to engage the community very clearly because in our policy of land, which is now being under, they are doing what we call the National Land Police of 2009, Paper Number Three. It is supposed to be amended. And there is nothing the committee had informed. And this one gives the National Land Commission mandate to identify all public land and make sure that they mediate if there is a private land occupied by the informal settlements so that now they organize on how to reset with those people. Because this population is very big in urban areas. So there is nowhere you can wake up, like the way they wake up. Midnight, they come and demolish and make people poor. That's why we have Mungano and Avijiji. We've just been there for over 20 years, from 1996 up to now. And our work has been organizing people to protect their rights. But when you organize your people to protect their rights, it is to make sure you follow their role. And that's what you've been following. We have been working together with the Minister of Land in developing policies, with the Civil Society in developing policies, like the National Land Policy. We participated from 2000, when the land reform started. So we know every step, like the Community Land Act. We have been participating. Kenya National Slama Upgrading and Prevention Policy. We have been participating in that. And currently, we have the Kenya Slama Upgrading and Prevention Bill, which is pending. And this one now has those provisions which guides the government on how to deal with informal settlements. It has the procedures, but it has not been enacted. So we have a very strong social movement, which is recognized. And we have also even done houses for some areas in Nairobi.
And we'll come into that in terms of solutions in the current problem. But from what you've just said, and I'm glad we have somebody from the National Lands Commission, still, that disparity and the role of National Commission, National Lands Commission, in elevating some of these challenges that we have. For example, they've mentioned on evictions, and we'll go deeper into that. I mean, you're sleeping with your children. I don't know whether you were given a notice two months or three months ago, but we just get breaking news on KTN News, "Oh, eviction is happening in this place and that place." Is there a role of community engagement prior to such occurrences that as a commission, you should be privy to and at the forefront?
Thank you. Actually, I can't remember in the recent past any evictions that we have carried out without giving any notice. And to answer some of the questions which have been raised here, we need to realize that without more stakeholder engagement, some of these solutions we are seeking as a government, even with the community, they cannot be effective. I can give you an example. In case of evictions, for example, you can only carry out evictions when there is a court holdup from the court or when you are following the procedure that has been clearly and in detail set out in the new dispensation of our landlords. And to be more specific, under Section 152 of the Land Act. So there is a process there and there is a procedure which has to be followed. So what happens in most of these cases? You find that different stakeholders, maybe they don't realize their role and how that role interferes with other stakeholders to make sure this can be carried out in the way it should be carried out. I can give some examples, but I don't want to point fingers. There have been cases, like a recent case in Kisum, where people settled there in 1972 because of, they were displaced because of the floods of a river and because of these natural disasters, they have to be moved there. But recently, a certain national institution decided that these people should not be there because it should be used for another interest, which is for public interest. Now, when you are moving these people from that land, there is a process which has to be followed. And in case of private land, then the owner of that land is the one to make this effective. In the case of public land, it is the responsibility of the National Land Commission. But then the institution which is affecting these evictions has to come to the National Land Commission and start this process. They are the ones to write, send out the notices. But if they do not do it with the National Land Commission, if they do not follow the process, then we cannot say it is only the National Land Commission which has failed here. In case of community land, who is supposed to do this? It is the CEC of land in that county if it has not been registered. And most of our community land has not been registered. So before these people are moved, then the Minister of Lands in that county has a responsibility to follow a certain process. So we have different actors. But one of our oversight constitutional mandate is to ensure that we give advisory on registration of land rights. And this is one area where we can give a lot of advisory, looking at what is happening with the eviction and in different areas. So another thing I want to bring out is the enforcement of the communities. It is a main stakeholder. But who is the community in this case? It is obvious when it comes to land which is owned by a private enterprise or a person. But what about land which is owned by a community? And we are just in the process of implementing our Community Land Act, which came into force in 2016. But still, there is land which used to belong to people. And you know that our law is a mixture of English property rights, African customary law, and also Islamic law, especially in the coast. So when we look at this mixture and our policies, different actors have to identify what their role is. And my brother and sisters here, who are in the civil society, they are important, but they need to sensitize the community to know what is the role of the community and what is the role of the different actors so that they can know how to interface these roles so that it can be effective.
Definitely, that's quite important to note. People understanding their role and collaborating for effectiveness, which is very important. We understand what brings sanity is the law because it doesn't favor anyone. It's just the law. Follow it or go home at the end of the day. And Justice Angote, the role of judiciary right now, especially the cases that we've seen. For example, what he just mentioned, there is an eviction. There is a case ongoing, this matter is in court. The people executing the eviction, they don't recognize that disparity, the role of the justice system in streamlining the aspect of, you know, land issues in regards to, you know, housing, right to housing. Where do we stand as a country right now?
Yeah, thank you very much. As a judge, I would speak specifically to any matter which is likely to come before me. But to answer your question, if you look at the constitution of Kenya, the judiciary has the mandate to declare any actions either by the legislature or executive and constitutional. And these are principles which obtains in almost all democratic countries. It's a principle which has been there since the times of Mambari and it has been applied over and over. Now, Article 23 of the constitution gives the courts the mandate to intervene in the event people's rights are infringed upon. And the courts have the mandate to give certain orders. They can give interim orders, the ones we call conservatory orders, so that we say, "Let's hear this case before an eviction can happen." The courts can also order for compensation in the event an eviction is illegal. And it can also grant any other reliefs which it thinks will meet the circumstances of the case. And that's what the courts have been doing over and over. Now, the law pertaining to public land and people occupy public land has now been settled by the Supreme Court in a very recent decision, the Me Too Bell Society's case. This was a case pertaining to an informal settlement around Wilson Airport. And what the Supreme Court has said is that we have, or rather, our people have the right to housing and to advocate housing. And that right should not be predicated on a title. When you are dealing with the right to housing, we should separate it from the right to a title so that we are, recognize the fact that these are our people who don't have titles, but they still have the right to shelter. And what the Supreme Court said in the Me Too Bell Society's case, which is a decision that is binding on us in the High Court, is that where people have occupied public land, they are entitled to certain things. And one of the things is inadequate notice because the law itself, under Section 152, C222G of the Land Act, provides that. We have the UN guidelines on evictions, which also demand that we do that. And we are governed by these international law instruments, which we need to abide by as a country. And therefore, what the Supreme Court has said is that we need to be cognizant of the fact that we have people who don't have land. And therefore, we need to take these people through a particular process to ascertain whether indeed they don't have land. And if they don't have land, what are we supposed to do? When you look at the Land Act under Section 134, it's very clear that the National Land Commission, together with the national government, are supposed to have what the law calls the settlement schemes. We used to have settlement schemes at Independence, but that particular program was first off. But the law says going forward to settle the landless people because the law acknowledges that we have people as landless. Then can the National Land Commission, in consultation with the national government, come up with settlement programs, form a fund, what they are calling the Land Settlement Fund, and then either settle these people on available public land or buy land and settle them? The law goes further to say, under Section 135 of the Land Act, that indeed the national government is supposed to come up with a select committee to identify people who deserve to be settled. So is the problem implementation? I don't know. But the laws are adequate. And if those laws are implemented, then we should be having less and less of people who are evicted from public land. But the courts have stated that these people have a right. They have a right to inadequate notice. That notice is to play within the law. It should be three months. Then the law goes further to say that this notice should be in the newspaper so that people actually are prepared before they can be evicted. And these evictions are not prohibited. You're not saying evictions are prohibited in law because we need land for public purposes and for other uses. But there is a process that we need to go through, identify the genuine landless people, and then move forward as a country. So that's how I see the scenario in terms of the law. When it comes to orders, the judiciary can issue orders. But when it comes to implementation, that's the executive part. We don't have a police force. We rely on the executive to implement our orders. But when we are issuing orders, we are conscious of the fact that the public, or rather, the state has the right to develop the country, but at the same time, the people who are on those pieces of land are entitled to certain rights, and the law provides which rights they are entitled to. And we need to comply with those provisions of the laws. Thank you.
And I'm seeing you eating to respond. I'll give you time to respond to some of those concerns. So keep them, knock them down, jot them somewhere. You know, I'm just thinking about, for example, May 4th, 2020. Karibangi North, yeah? Seaweed Settlement, 7,000 residents. Going home, you've been evicted, find somewhere else to stay. We saw a couple of days thereafter, Roy evictions. And I'm looking from judiciary's angle, seems things should be running the way they should have stated. Though he's advocated himself, saying implementation is the executive. But on the front that you're in, you people are the people, dealing with the people, advocacy level. I mean, do communities fully understand these rights? And in case of such a situation, for example, mentioning those laws, those procedures, majority of our communities, you know, in tune with those, so that in case one of them is not followed, they are able to stand up for their rights, huh?
Thank you so much. What justice is refusing to say is a problem that we have as a country. Are we a country of a rule of law? And what do we mean by a country that abides by the rule of law? A country that abides by the rule of law is a country that, where each and every person feels that they are bound by the law and they are bound to follow the law of the land. But we are in this country, we haven't changed. We have a new constitution. But it's almost like new wine in old wine skins, where some people still feel that they are above the law. So we have the constitution that provides expressly for a right to housing and provides the basic structure for the protection of the right to housing. And then we have a government that feels that that law does not bind them. Especially specific arms of the government, like the Office of the President and other institutions of the state, like Kenya Railways, and other institutions of the state, like Kura. So if you're looking at the law in itself, our law is not perfect, but it's quite capable of providing the protection that is required, not only within our own national laws, but also within international law. Because if you look at our constitution, especially the 2010 constitution, it brings into play international law into our domestic legal framework through Article 26 of the constitution, which basically says that international law, once ratified by Kenya, becomes a part of the Kenyan law. And the courts have done quite a lot of work to recognize that international law and to recognize instruments that have been developed within international law, like the general comments. And if you look at, I don't want to mention the names of specific judges, but we have very, very progressive judges that have brought about very progressive jurisprudence, like the Me Too Bell jurisprudence that he mentions. Our problem per se is not the lack of the laws, but it's the implementation of those laws. And the thinking by some aspects or some elements in the national government that the law does not bind them. Almost they are above the law. I'll give you an example. The Office of the President was in deep sea on Thursday last week, on Friday last week. And I approached the gentleman and told him, the law says that in the context of evictions, there are guidelines. Some of the guidelines is that eviction has to be done during the day. The persons who are conducting the evictions have to recognize themselves or have to introduce themselves and say, we are from this particular institution. We have been sent by this institution to do this particular thing. So I asked that gentleman, okay, please tell me who you are, where you are, which institution you serve, and the reason why you have insisted that this eviction has to go on. He completely refused to tell me his name, just the name. And I asked him, okay, the law is very, the lawyers say, lawyers like saying the law is very clear. I told him the law is very clear. I showed them the eviction guidelines that are contained in the Land Act. And I told him, these are the requirements that you have to follow when you're conducting evictions. And he completely refused to tell me his name. So it tells you, and he came with a government vehicle with a national flag. So it tells you, we have the laws, they're not perfect. We can work on them and improve them. But do we implement them? And do we think as government institutions that actually those laws bind us?
Definitely.
That's the question.
That's a big question, which I'm gonna throw to you. Some of the solutions now, since you've recognized the problem, is that we have different actors. We have a very good, you know, law in regards to land, in regards to housing rights, stating very clearly. But in terms of implementation, some of these nuances like eviction, it becomes a problem. So, in these fishes and cracks, what are the solutions? How can we create that, what I used earlier on when I asked you a question, how can we create synergy between these different actors to make sure that the law is followed to the latter?
Thank you very much, Noah.
Thank you very much, Noah. Just picking up from where Dr. Ariya stopped. The issue of state impunity should not be ignored. The state is the main duty bearer and the custodian of the law. But they cannot purport to be following the rule of law if they are breaching it themselves. So state impunity should just stop. And then the idea of solutions. This issue has been there for a very long time. If you look at the Ndungu Commission report, if you look at the TGRC report, the recommendations are there and the solutions are there. It is just us bringing out those reports and adhering to the recommendations that were done after public resources were used to develop those reports. And we can even go further and ask ourselves the irregularly acquired plots where the vulnerable poor are forcibly evicted so that the politically corrects can get those lands, like the case of Roy, the case of Karibangi. How do we ensure that such elites, there is no elite capture of the lands of the vulnerable poor? And there are solutions. The Ndungu report is very clear on how we can handle the such lands that people use their political connections to acquire. And Article 46 also goes on and just talks about land that has been acquired irregularly is not protected by the law. I know the judiciary has very progressive precedents in regards to just giving very good rulings around that. But we need to see more of that and we need to see the big fish being told off as well.
Definitely. We need to stand our ground. But you said solutions are there. That's the funny thing. Because when you talk about matters land, yeah? It is, they call it a historic thing that we've had in the country. Especially looking at the size of the nation Kenya and the disparity, be it in terms of land ownership, even accessing rights to, you know, proper housing. Right now, we are talking about the Big Four Agenda, which is, you know, it's been championed very, very, you know, it's out there. The question is, as we champion these overarching problems, are we dealing with the underlying issues, these foundational issues?
No, we are not. We are not, and we are not, even if we are dealing, we are not dealing with them conclusively. And I'm glad the vice chair is here. The issue of historical land injustices is still a thorn in the flesh of Kenyans. We need to understand this vulnerable poor. Some of them have been in those lands like since independence. And when you're talking about solutions, we should also understand that some state agencies, like Dr. Ariya said, are being used to frustrate and defeat the law and defeat the rights of the vulnerable poor as well. When you're talking about disparity, we can have very beautiful pieces of legislation, but if they are not implemented, then they are just pieces of paper and they are put on shelves. And just to pick up from where Ezekiel talked about all these policies and pieces of legislation, the multiplicity of laws frustrates the implementation face also in some sort of way. Those laypeople cannot be expected to know all those provisions in order to demand for their rights or entitlements within the laws. One issue, yes, land is multifaceted, we agree. But you get that one issue, that the political goodwill can be able to sort it out. It has like six, seven, eight, nine, 10 laws affecting just one issue. And these are laypeople that we expect them to demand for a right from those 10 pieces of legislation. And lawyers, we do that because we've gone to school for six years, you see? But now these lay communities, the vulnerable poor, especially the vulnerable poor, we expect that these underdogs, so to speak, in conversations to be able to go blow by blow by, with the government. That is wrong. So when you're talking about synergy, state impunity is the first culprit that we should highlight, that it should stop. They are custodians of the law, they should behave as such.
Definitely, very important. So as you mentioned earlier on, you've, you know, as a representative of Wanaichi, you've been part of some of these laws and progression that we've seen in this arena. The question, for example, on multiplicity of law, yeah? As a representative, do you normally sometimes raise some of these concerns? How we can make things a little bit easier, especially for the vulnerable in the society in regards to matters land?
Yes, I think previously we had about, about eight something laws talking on land. And they have been able to simplify and harmonize those laws so that now it can be easy for the institutions who are responsible to, to use them for implementation. For example, the Kura and the Kena institutions, we have been working with them. And we have already developed what we call the Stakeholder Engagement Framework, that they can use to engage the community when they are doing the infrastructure development. But the problem is now, they were saying, they are given targets and timeframe to complete their work. For example, if it is a road of five kilometers, maybe they are given three years to do it. And because of that draying of negotiation with the community, they find that they will not meet the target. So what they will do, they will organize for eviction so that they can fasten that process. That's what they were saying. But to me, the other issue which I normally see is the issue of corruption. Because these people, for example, the NLC, are not given so much money, maybe for settlements. But this institution which are doing the infrastructure development, they have billions of money. So they normally use the money to hire the police so that they can clear whatever they want.
I thought police are not meant to hire.
They are given money, I know, I know they are given money to facilitate eviction. They cannot come there without being given money. They will never come free. We did it in Kibera, when the railway was evicting people. We know how they use money to make sure they facilitate the police officers on the ground, by day, how much money they are paid. Those big officers, they are given a lot of money so that they protect the exercise, not people to interfere. Because most of the community, they must resist. If they must resist, automatically the staffs from the Kura or from Kena cannot work. So to me, there is that progress of making sure that these too much laws, which brings confusion, they are brought together to control. But you see, one of the weaknesses I see also is that there is a problem in humanity within our institutions. Because, for example, if we have a village, we just been there for 100 years. People have been born there, some have died there. And you just wake up one day and you plan for eviction without using the right procedure, without considering that this village has a school, has an health center. We have old people, we have developments, people are taking loans. For example, from last year, the impunity has been exercised by the government since Corona came. There is no end private sector, we just carried eviction in Kenya. It is the government, which has been carrying eviction. You see, they say, stay in the house, wash your hands, make sure you keep distance. But you demolish the whole village. How do you expect people to follow the protocol of the?
Stay in which house?
Yes, how? It will never work. That's why we're saying, sometimes we don't understand. And that's where you find, people don't understand how the government works. Because once you realize that this is an international problem, for example Corona, it has affected a lot of people. Eviction has been done by the house owners because people have not been able to pay rent. People, the salary has been reduced, some have been dismissed. And some of the employers have used that advantage to terminate the work of other staffs. You find somebody who was paid around 8,000, but because of that opportunity of Corona, now that company uses that opportunity to remove the old staffs, bring new staffs with the different terms of work, with the low salary. So you see now, we have a lot of people who are not working. We have a lot of people who are displaced. And yet, we are saying we have Big Four Agenda. The Big Four Agenda, if you see, the idea was very clear. But there was a lot of politics from the civil servants, who have already acquired their own houses through loans. They didn't want to enter into that process. They were complaining, we have houses, we don't want to be involved in this. So you find that it was not taken serious by some of the institutions within the government. And that's why you find it is not working well. But it was a good idea. Because it was to force the government now to put up every year some money for housing development. So that now you reduce the demand of the houses. But if you cannot reduce the demand of houses and also see how to settle the issue of land, land is a problem. Most of the informal settlements, we have structure owners who never bought the land. They just occupy the land, they have a business. Some of them are civil servants, who are very big in the government. They have thousands of rooms. They make over 2 million per month, 1 million per month, 500 cities per month. So it is a business. So when the government plans to do upgrading, you find now resistance from those people who are using that informal settlements as their business. So you find a project taking over 10 years. For example, Kibera, when the sma upgrading was taking place, it took over 10 years to be completed. And after the completion of that project, you find almost 50 people are the beneficiaries. But over 500 are not the previous beneficiaries. They have been displaced because there is no affordable houses. The government must plan on how to deal with the public land within urban areas, for example, the regeneration of the old estates. They must do the social housing that will cater for tenants within the city. There is no way every person can afford 3 million house, the one they are saying is affordable. It cannot, and yet people lose their jobs. It is impossible.
You've raised some very, you know, pertinent points right there, the issue of corruption, which is a very big issue, not only in Kenya but in Africa, especially touching on land. I mean, quite an emotive issue. But earlier on, Duk, you had a very advocate, you had a very interesting point that you needed to point out. I saw you raise your microphone, but I had to take the round. You know, it would have been unfair to come back to you without reaching the far end, yeah? Have you forgotten the point?
No, I haven't. But it is clear that there are institutions which should be sitting here with us, eh? Like police, Minister of Lands.
Yes.
Kena, when you are talking about evictions and big projects. So maybe in future, you can have that discussions with them.
Definitely, I'll try get the police here. I don't know, should I go with a court order? No, kidding, yeah.
Just to point a few issues which have been raised. On the issue of settlement and adjudication, another very important stakeholder you have to bring on board in this discussion are the lawmakers. I don't know whether you know, a lot of our mandate was taken away to the Minister of Lands, taken back actually. So we are not able to implement some of these recommendations we make. And as Alubia has pointed out, then they become pieces of paper because... because we don't have edge-to-edge process of making them a reality. Ours is to just make a recommendation. And you know what that amounts to? Sensatized for policy change. But then, we cannot do this with the other stakeholders. We cannot do this with the Minister of Lands. I don't know whether you are Lord Ship, knows that when it comes to the Land Settlement Fund, the chairman has a seat on it, and that's it. But before 2016, we were able to do a lot with the decisions that we make with these stakeholders. But then, that is not possible anymore. So the Minister of Lands, I hope next time you will invite them because they can answer most of these questions which are being raised. The lawmakers also, to know the importance of why the National Land Commission was supposed to have end-to-end process of making implementation a reality. But those laws were repealed. When it comes to historical land injustice, Alube, I'm sure you know, the commissioners came up with excellent resolutions. I know that they are excellent because they were like the ones we used to use in former Yugoslavia when I was working there. And they were effective, but they were thrown out by parliament. So we need all these stakeholders to know that they have a role to play in the problems that we have. Now, talking about the community and the role of the community, it is time we started to demystify what the law is. Long before the colonizers came, we had our own African legal systems. And if you go to Trukana today, they cannot show you this land belongs to this family or to one of the nine communities in that, in Trukana. But they know exactly where the land is. You might think it's empty land. But this is governed by economic rights. There is what they use for this land. It is also governed by seasons. So when we are taking this land, let's say for government development, which is important for the community, how do we engage this community? We have cases in the commission where the cases are being referred back to us because there is a conflict between the county government, the national government, and the community. And the government has to spend a lot of money because they have to follow a certain procedure. And there are regulations which are laid down in contracts that if it is not implemented within a certain time, then they lose a lot of money, some turns in billions, and that is taxpayers' money. Now, when we balance all these interests, it is the implementation which is the problem and the sensitization of the communities and the enforcement of the community which is the problem. Because, for example, we are talking about having a lot of land laws, but we also have a lot of regulations and policy. And I've come across institutions which should be aware of the policy in their area, like, let's say, in environment. And they are actually practicing in that area, but they are not even aware of that policy. Like, we also have the National Land Use Policy, which the Minister of Lands passed in 2017. But how many institutions, which are listed there, who should be working together in a group to implement this? And National Land Commission is just one of the very many institutions, including the community. Lastly, Noah, what I want to point out is this. And I'm very happy with our current Chief Justice, not just because she's a woman.
Yeah.
And my lord here will bear me witness. One of the things she's championing is to make sure that the vulnerable have access to justice. How is she doing this? By championing the alternative justice system mechanisms. And these mechanisms, we are always there. And they are very effective and they are very fast. So the National Land Commission is working with the judiciary and county governments to come up with a regulatory framework where we can send cases, like the way we have the court and experimentation. So they can send the cases to the commission and we can send them back to the communities. I'll just give you a simple example. In the case of Ogiek. The case of Ogiek, it was in the High Court for a very long time. We are talking about issues about interest of protection of our forests and protections of these people who have been living there. So what Justice Namoya came up with is to send the case back to the National Land Commission as managers of public land, which was a forest in this case, to ensure that the people who should benefit are identified by the elders and to make sure that this process is carried out in a just way. But what if we had started with the community? So lastly.
I'll have to guide you. Madam Vice Chair, I know it's very passionate. And I know these are quite emotive issues, especially when you have a panel of four and very well articulate and very well informed individuals with deep knowledge. And our can just go by like that. And imagine it has just gone by like that, yeah? So on the broadcast end, I understand this is, we haven't even, we haven't scratched the surface, to be sincere. Basically, what we've done today is introduction. Like, when I joined Compass,